Okay, the time is now 6:45. I'd like to call this special pension board meeting to order on March 25th. And call to order, and roll call please.
All right.
Kevin Cunningham.
Kristi Dawson.
Dean Martin. And Peggy will not be here tonight. She is unable to attend. Item C, approval of the minutes from the pension board meeting from February 12th. And I know there are a few items on there for amending. One of them inclusive of that is Kristi spelling her name. And you also are chosen to help me out a little bit with, you have some modifications in this as well.
Yes.
Yep, on the minutes itself, it was that it wasn't Kevin Cunningham seconding, it was Peg Burey, and then all in favor, motion passed.
Those corrections, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 12th, 2024. Yeah, February 12th, 2024.
Art's made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Dean, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Stay. Okay. Item D is to consider an act on a pension distributions as requested. There's four of them in here, so item number one. We have Margaret Martin, which is a parent educator, so 22 and a half years of employment in the school system. Margaret is a long time, I think she was also the chair of the union as well, so to appreciate all the work that she has put into the town of Plainfield. She is requesting a pension commencing April 1st, monthly for $640.75.
I'll make a motion, I'd be agree with the pension for Margaret Martin.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Dean, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Margaret. All right, item number two. You'll see that there is a request for Jaclyn Hoffauer to receive a pension again, starting on April 1st, 2024. She had 12, almost 13 years of employment, again, as an occupational therapist with the town Board of Education. She's requesting her pension to start April 1st at the monthly rate of $759.19.
I'll make a motion that we agree with the pension of Jaclyn Hoffauer.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Art, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, thank you, Jaclyn. Item number three. We have a request from Lisa Roberts to receive a pension. This is a starting backdated to March 1st, and the annual pension, starting then, would be $924.61. And she was longtime employee of the town and a sewer department, so again, thank you for your service. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement for Lisa Robertson, the amount of $924.61 per month, started on the, on March 24th.
Motion, again, here a second.
Second.
Dean, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, thank you, Lisa. Next up is a modification. So this was something that was done a while ago for our pension. We had made a motion, and as you're looking at the numbers there, you have Gage Griffin. So I think what we're looking for is ask for a rollover contributions to town pension, from the town pension. The amount there was incorrect, so looking for $30,320.79.
It's corrected, or?
Let me just follow, let me just revise that. So revised pension amount, Haley Griffin pension amount should be $29,592.66. There was a confusion in the meeting, because it's listed as 25,592.66. The correct should be, again, $29,592.66. I think you should have an attachment there as well to show you that, so let's, just, if we can get a motion to make the modification, to make it so it will be 29,582.66.
Second.
Dean, and Kristi. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There is that one more, I apologize. So that was Haley Griffin, and this one is going to be for Gage Griffin, who is asking to have his monies invested into the program reassigned. So Gage is looking for $30,320.79.
So he's asking for a rollover?
Yep. It's usually when the police retire, and in this case, Gage is being younger, wanting to continue on service somewhere else, will be just rolling over those monies into a new account that he was going into. So he's looking for a rollover for the amount of $30,320.79.
Seven.
Kristi, you have a second?
Second.
Dean, sorry, Art. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no other requests for pension at this time, so I would ask that we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Seven.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the time is now 6:52. Thank you. Just want to pass all paperwork back in. Good evening, the time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this board's select meeting to order for March 25th, 2024, and ask that you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and roll call.
All right.
Kevin Cunningham, and Peggy again is absent for tonight. Item C, approve meeting minutes from board's select meeting from 3:11.
It's only one. Era. Number seven. John Chris, whatever it should be, Jen Sangerman, J E N N, and last name's S A N G E R N A N O. With that correction, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for 3:11, 24.
Motion's been made to approve with corrections. Art and I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, which is public comment, is there anybody here for the public that wishes to speak tonight? Hearing none, we have no all business, we go into item F. New business, number one, consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector totaling $185,052 to Rhanna Doherty.
Make a motion to approve the tax refund amount, $185,052.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item two, discuss and review the town of Plainfield ordinances as listed in the town charter, section 5, 3D. Art came up with a very extensive list, multiple pages of, just typos. Yep. So there's about four pages of typos in there. There are been a few items which are talking about possible repeals, and then there's some questions. I'm going to see if I can shorten this up a little bit, I appreciate all the work you did on this. I think that if we can get a list of, printed list of what the typos are, maybe highlight what they are in color or something, because when we eventually come to a town meeting, it's for the public to read through it and say yea or nay. But as a group, if they can read through all the typographical errors and say, yep, that's good, that could be all done in my book.
That's what I was thinking, do it as for select.
Yep. Yep, it's, it's, it's all these things together. So the second one, the second grouping is the possible repeals, so I did some little research on some of those.
Okay.
Item two. Yep. Okay, so on the orders concerning the sale of alcohol liquors on a Sunday, I think that's a little outdated. I think that is well within our rights to talk about repealing that. What we'd have to do, by the way, if we did repeals, I would have to have a new ordinance number to repeal the following items, and then just list them all out.
Like 74.
Yes, like 74. An ordinance concerning mobile homes, mobile parks, trailers and trailer parks. We talked about this maybe about a year and a half ago, I think it was 2021, we talked about that, and I think I put it in the book, October 22, October 11th, 22, and we said that, well, the state of Connecticut now takes that over, so there's no need to have its town ordinance when the state has a Connecticut statue on that issue, so we could repeal that based on that issue. I remember, the third went down, 15, ordinance concerning participation in the state resident police program, I believe that was repealed by ordinance 66, so I think we're okay already with that one. The next one up is, an ordinance, ordinance 23, ordinance concerning appropriation to change from a uniform fiscal year and payment of taxes. Ordinance 18 was repealed by 74, but yet this was amended by 18. So I think a little further detail we need to take a look, but it was repealed by 23. Or, what, ordinance 23 was repealed in future. So that's one I still have a question on.
Yeah, they kind of, yeah.
Kind of mixed it up.
They didn't repeal the amendment, which was 23.
Yep. Yep. You picked the wrong one, is what I'm getting at, yeah.
They should have done 23.
Correct. Ordinance number 26.
I want to check that. Sorry. Because I think it's totally different now.
Yeah, the numbers are wrong. 23, then you go back to 18.
The ordinance, yeah, say, I should have done this one, repealed.
23.
Yeah.
Yep. I just wanted to get clarification on that before we move forward on it, so for right now, I'd like to hold off on that one. Ordinance number 26, it's an ordinance that says concerning adoption of retirement plan for paid town employees. So if you take a look at 26, it's very, very vague, and that's all there is for ordinances. So I think we talked about this about a year or so ago as well, and talked about maybe redrafting something, at the time it was ordinance 140, it would have been, ordinance 140, you know, it's talked about a more in-depth review of what is actually retirement plan, a plan for the town of Plainfield employees. So here it's very generic. It talks about the board selecting the board of finance to establish and administer and maintain a retirement plan for the employees of the town of Plainfield. Said plan commencing in and, fiscal year of July 1st, 1970, through, it looks like it says 2, it says 2, June 30th, 1971, and continuing thereafter. So I can understand what their thought was, they wanted to get a retirement plan for the employees, but they didn't go into any detail, word of mouth, and looking how this was proposed.
Or did they? You'll notice that starts with number two.
Right, again, it's all, it's messed up.
That's number one.
Yeah. So on ordinance 140, what I was looking to do is put something a little more in depth with Connecticut general statutes and how they work with it, establishing the authority of a pension board, who makes up that pension board, their powers and duties, and what constitutes a quorum at that time, establishing rules, you know, looking for the financial transactions via the plan. Here we are, meeting just, meeting before us, and we're talking about a pension board, and it was actually through word of mouth, through the, then superintendent of the schools, who said, well, wait a minute, your ordinance talks about town employees, but I'm not a town employee, I am the superintendent of the school, but I live in another town. So that was modified to say it should be the, made up of the three selected, it should be made up of the chair of the board of finance, because that was elected as a resident of the town, and it should be made up of the, so it was board of finance and board of education. So that is something that we need to, you know, verify, review. It would be one of the things, if we were going to modify ordinance number 26, we would have to, in, in vote on 140 first, and then we can actually go back and repeal, or note this is where it should be. Not to mention the fact, you saw number two, number two is referenced, but no number one. No, it was back on on 26, you showed me that on ordinance 26, there was a number two, but there was no number one in there.
About right.
Right. So we can modify to fix that as well, just saying that's the established number one, because there's no number, there is no number one. You're never going to find anything in the town clerk's office, I've looked and looked. So that's something else we need to discuss. I would say, let me draft something on 140 first, and then put that on the beginning of the document when we have a public town meeting, to approve that and then go forward. And some of these are very straightforward. Ordinance number 53, ordinance concerning the payment of the town of Plainfield general fund by the Connecticut Yankee Greyhound Auto, Yankee Auto Racing, Greyhound Racing. That's no longer in existence, so this should be repealed. Same thing with, we're talking about, I checked out with the town tax assessor, and 62 and 63 don't impact anybody, so she said, you know, it would be good to repeal both of those. 62 for the public to hear, it's ordinance authorizing exemption from property taxes for a building which is equipped with solar energy heating or cooling system. Doesn't give any definition to what that is, so it doesn't affect anybody at this point, she said it would repeal that. 63, ordinance authorizing exemption from property taxes for any solar electricity installed in a generation of electricity for private resident use, and again, she said the same thing. 64, an ordinance authorizing property tax exemption for God's Gift House, Inc., again, something that can be repealed, which goes right in line with the next one. 68, ordinance concerning the abatement of property taxes due to the town of Plainfield by the Central Assembly of God. So again, something we can consider repealing. Last one up here, I checked with NCOG, so ordinance 85, Concord ordinance creating the Northeast Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority, and you saw the reply back from our NCOG, who talked about the fact that it never was properly supported, therefore something that's not inactive, it's not active right now. So it was terminated in 1996, so we should consider repealing that as well. That's a lot on the plate for, yep, there's a lot on the plate for a town meeting to say, okay, let's talk about ordinance 140, and if that's a valid ordinance to act on, do that first, quickly vote on the typos, and then go back to the repeals. I think that would be enough for one town meeting to, to work on those items. So we're looking to go in the right direction that way, is that what you're thinking? Because the rest of them are, the questions, we have plenty of time.
Did you go through the questions?
Uh.
Okay. Before, no, I'm just saying this because there could be some that I questioned whether they should be repealed or not, and if there might be any questions.
Yep. And the reason why I didn't go forward into them is because I thought that there was enough on the plate for a town meeting.
Just do a read through.
Yep.
You know, a quick read through.
Right. And there may be another section of the town meeting, we'll get to that in a few minutes, so something we probably consider in June, first week in June. So if we're going to take an action on this, I would, well, it says still discuss and review, so I think we've done a, our share of that, and Peggy probably has some input as well, and like to, before we make an action item to a town meeting, we have Peggy's input.
Especially with the typos.
Yes.
That she was telling on.
Right. So because there's no action on here, discuss and review, I think we just continue this to the next meeting, now that we have at least a base for what's going on. In that case, we can go into item three, discuss the second reading of the donations So in your packet, you should have a date of, I said, March 19th on it, a little further detail for what the donations policy is looking to do, and then you'll also have two pages, one is the application for the event for usage, and the next one is request of dispersment. I can give you a very up-to-date example, started doing this with some of our departments already, and here's one as example. They received from Recreation, they filled out donation acceptance form for an event that they like to have later on in the year. This is for Recreation again, and they would like to supplement a development, developmental track series for grades five through 12, and in July 3rd to the 24th. So they're looking for, you know, incoming monies as well, but this was a donation from a family. Here's if you read through what it was, is this young man had passed away, and to honor that person, they wanted to create this program. So the donation was for $1,200, and so we need to know that it goes into the general fund. It is something that, you know, the program itself should be making money to offset what the costs are for the program, and then the question is, when they're ready to make a donation, where are they going to make it to, and that other form should help to put So this is just a second reading, and I think the next time we actually review this, it should be with an action item to, again, break it forward to make it a donation policy. Okay.
Never mind, I think you answered my question about the box.
Yes.
Donation box. It'd be multiple, so that's good.
Yep.
You know, I have a question I had, they say, the budget line item, is that going to be town contributions? There we go, there we go, I know.
You mean, it's under town revenue?
Yeah, number one.
Yep.
Standard donations, total donation amount. This is, you know, I would assume that goes into town contributions.
In this, in this case, it would. So let's say that every year, the family was to look for making donations, so we would put that into the local revenue lines, and so that would be listed there. All right, item number four, consider an act on adding members to the newly created charter revision commission as part of Connecticut general statutes 7-188. There's a lot to this one, so I'm going to just walk through step by step. Had a conversation this weekend with the attorney, because a question arose about membership, how membership is to be utilized. Membership is something that we need to follow through with the state statutes. Thirty percent of the participants cannot, can be, thirty percent can be people who are public officials, and the definition of public official, employee of the town, elected official, someone serving in a board or commission. So with that, we were thinking the wrong way. So we need to, needed to come up with some names and some people who would be able to help and support. It was a hectic couple of days, I can say that. We've been looking for people, again, who have some familiarity, so that works, I'll give you the list of names here that I have. I have Cheryl Hurley, who was on the board already, so she has a good familiarity of it, and she is also not in a board or commission. Rodney Graves, so that's another person that has not served on a board or commission. We have Brenda Miller, who currently is not serving on a board or commission, but is again, a resident. And we had one, very last minute, was Scott Charwood, who is also not serving on a board or commission. We had a lot of participation from people who have already served on these boards, and I appreciate all of that input from the people who put their names in, but we can, in this way it works out, if we were to pick five people, thirty percent would be one. One person who is serving on a current board or commission would be the only person that would be able to serve under that. So, well, the brain total would be five, but the one person out of the five would be the one person who currently serves on a board or commission. And again, I appreciate the fact that everybody put their name and they wanted to volunteer. I gave you my list of what I would like to see, you have a list of all of their letters of intent, so I would like to make the proposal and a motion to. Sure. So we have, according to Connecticut general statute 7-188, adding the following members to the newly created charter revision commission, June Gagne, Cheryl Hurley, Rodney Gervais, Brenda Miller, and Scott Charwood, to make up that committee, and that is my motion to add those five.
Can we make a motion?
Yep. Yep. Any other discussion, other than I wish I could put more people on, but according to the state statutes, that's kind of unfortunate part about it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. For those people who have mentioned already, I've already drafted letters to send out tomorrow, but just remind everybody that those people need to come in, just warn them right away, because the packet that I'll give them all has a, a series of dates which we reviewed with the town clerk, you get that going immediately, so. All right, now, item number five in your packet is, discuss an act on allocating opioid settlement monies to the Board of Education for a partnership with Project Courage at local high schools. So this is through a national class action suit, that every state who participated in received monies, and from there, each of the states had divvied down their monies to just different municipalities. So I have a one pager there from Kelly, talking about how much opioid money is in that account, and it's an account of $60,472.88, and the program information is also in there in your packet, because I asked the superintendent, what could we use the monies for? And so he was talking about a program which runs over multiple years, and it is something that is helpful, Project Courage. It, it proposed a servicing engagement for the Plainfield Public Schools, and it's, you know, a fantastic program, it has a whole litany of ideas here to what they're going to do and use the monies for within that project. So if we do get more monies, and by the way, there's a link in here also, packet for your settlement and how that works, we will probably get a little bit more money, maybe $4,000, $5,000 more, and I would like to allocate that in the future, and I'll talk about it now, for baking, because it's another thing that we need to be vigilant of, and help and support education, so that we can try to get to the younger students much quicker. So at this point, though, this is where I'd like to be able to allocate the money, Board of Education has said they would definitely utilize it for that program, so I wanted to know your intent.
Will this go for the four years?
Yes, if it's split down, it should be like a.
Yes, it'll.
Yeah. Yep.
I'll make a motion to allocate opioid settlement monies to the VOB for partnership with Project Courage.
In the amount of $60,472.88?
Yes.
Okay. And I will second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, items six, seven, and eight. If you thought the first part of the meeting was long. All right, so I've written up something that kind of explains six, seven, and eight. I know for people looking at their agendas, it's a little difficult, so that's why I wanted to do some background to it. Item six. I'll do that right now. Item six, consider an act on the sale of cell tower located 45, 51 Unity, and it's going to blend into others, just topics also, like item seven, consider an act on the town lease for the town of Plainfield own billboard, 47, 51, Unity Street, also, consider an act on relocation, reallocation of funds from the sale of real estate of 121, 122 Plainfield Road. So I'll go through my little speech here. The town of Plainfield has an opportunity to proceed with upgrading the Plainfield Lions Park to its completion without having to apply for another grant, and without having to spend monies from the fund mills. The park upgrades are scheduled to continue this year with items in phase one that will include the outside restroom and pavilions, the fitness court, the basketball courts, volleyball court, ADA pathways, and lakes. We have plans for a southern pavilion, a splash pad, a stage, and restructure the town hall space to add more parking by closing the two rows alongside and behind the town hall. The town currently has $298,818.82 from the initial Steve Grant, that will cover the engineering and installation of the restrooms and pavilion, and we're planning and installation of the restrooms and pavilion, and we're planning on applying for another Steve grant to continue more parts of this project. However, there are sufficient developments, sufficient developments that have occurred that make the entire project available to complete without using tax dollars or monies from the fund balance. The town has been approached to sell the current town-owned cell tower at the Plainfield Highway Garage for $660,000 to Tower Point. These funds, along with the request to reallocate reserve funds that were required for the sale of the Plainfield doctor's offices at 121-22 Plainfield Road back in January 2008 for $389,000, have now earned interest for the total of $510,000. That should make a total of $1,170,000 available to complete all parts of Lion Park upgrades without applying for more grants and hoping that we are, or hoping that we would be awarded more grant money without taking monies from the fund balance and ensuring the project is completed by the time we manage. An additional item to consider, while losing the approximate $37,500 from the cell tower annual revenue, the town has been working with a billboard company to contract a lease agreement for them to install a billboard at the highway garage with more than, with more than replaced the lost cell tower revenue and agreed to lease payments starting at $67,500 annually and every five years graduated payments from there. The town currently does not utilize that billboard, and we receive zero dollars for revenue. It's my hope that we consider these opportunities to complete an important project and do so without fiscal impact to our town budgets or town funds while increasing our future revenue streams for future budgets. So I can, I guess I would entertain discussion on the three items. I would say one of the things, just to make a point of interest here, would we apply for more grants for Steve? Absolutely. But I would look to do those grants somewhere else in town. So if we can utilize the funds to do that without another Steve grant here, we can actually apply for other Steve grants elsewhere.
No, I don't really have any questions. It's a, 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 it's Make a motion to move the sale of the cell tower located forty-seven fifty-one Unity Street to Board of Finance for approval.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider an act on a lease of the town, town of Plainfield owned billboard located forty-five seventy-one Unity, and that is item. Seven. So, this is a company that, for those interested to know, they're the same company that did a billboard up on three ninety-five in Killingley, I think it's the Attawakken exit. I had been approached by somebody to lease out our billboard. The number that they came to us with was pennies, honestly pennies, pennies on that. This company would like to come in, would like to lease the billboard. There's a documented agreement. Again, it's all waiting for final approval through the town, but they would like to be able to come in and pay sixty-five five, sixty-five five, I'm sorry, I made a mistake earlier, sixty-seven, sixty-five five annually, in years six through ten, seventy-two, five, oh five oh, eleven through fifteen, seventy-nine, two fifty-five, and then years sixteen through twenty, eighty-seven, one eighty. So, they're graduating every five years. And then, there's one more piece to that, is upon construction and activation of the structures, they will also give us an additional fifty thousand dollars just to turn on, to start up. So, all that still has to go through approval process, or if you do make the motion, also to Board of Finance?
I'll make a motion to send a lease of the town Plainfield owned billboard located forty-seven fifty-one Unity Street to the Town Hall to Board of Finance.
Make that motion, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, the final one is consider an act on relocation of funds from the sale of real estate on one twenty-one twenty-two. I actually have a little history on that one, because when I was in office years ago, there was a facility which is on that site that was for two doctor's offices. The building was in a lot of disrepair, so they had asked me to go over and walk through step by step the things that had to be replaced or fixed. I had heard that the Bacchus Hospital was looking to put an emergency room in the town of Plainfield in the future. I reached out to David Whitehead from Bacchus, had a conversation about would he be willing to consider putting his, so to speak, Bacchus is put in the door in Plainfield, and purchasing that to have a couple of doctors start working here immediately. At the end of the day, they said yes. So, what you have in your packet here is meetings from December, December tenth, January fourteenth, sending it to a town meeting. Board of Finance also sent it to a town meeting for the sale of three eighty-nine Bacchus, and then, of course, the copy of the town meeting itself. And they were looking, at that time, they just voted to hold on to the money, but it was put into a reserve account, because there was discussion of putting it into a matching grant for a library. That's nowadays, building a building and putting in a library is costly just to build a building, number one, but to have an annual account, it's probably about between four hundred and five hundred thousand for a brand-new library, is something we just can't do right now, can't sort of. Doesn't mean we're not going to go after grants in the future to see what else we can do, or if we have any event factors who would like to make a large donation, but for right now, I would like to be able to transfer those monies as well for use, earmark it for use for the Lions Park upgrades. So, you have the history there, and. I want to check this.
Yes, they never mentioned a library.
Yeah, there's not.
Just capital to move.
Right.
Do I need to get more?
Yeah. Offline, you can talk about a library, because I get the story from other people, so. But yeah, you can only go by what's listed in the clerk's office. So, I would ask that you would consider the reallocation of funds from the sale, sale of the real estate on one twenty-one twenty-two Plainfield Road, again, to go to the Board of Finance for their approval, and.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The other two, or three. Consider an act on Homeland Security Grant Program. This is in item number nine in your packet. Am I sure I give you a full copy? Yeah. So, usually, we apply for something from Homeland Security. There are some monies allocated. We are, I think for a lot of region, we'd like to do some things, and I'm working with the emergency management services to see what the things they could use money for, but we can apply for it. So, this is our MOU with them.
This goes through CCOG?
Yep. Well, it does go through CCOG, but it is hard, because they're, where they house Homeland Security areas down there. Yep. So, in this moment, we need to have a motion to approve the Homeland Security Grant Program's MOA and resolution that is drafted.
Make a motion.
I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number ten is to discuss an act, bid for RFP for conditions assessment of the Plainfield Town Hall. Remember, I mentioned earlier tonight that we're talking about historic rent? This would be, we posted it out there for the conditions assessment, so that we can get an idea of what has to be reviewed, looked at. I think, there is one page in here which gives a good listing for you. Page eight, scope of services. So, the successful bidder will evaluate and report the conditions of the following items, stucco siding, the windows and doors, the clock tower, the weather vane, the railings, stairs, front steps, ADA compliances, the flooring, and fire escapes. So, we had a bidder come, a couple of bidders come in, gave us, gave us an opportunity to take a look at how much it would cost to do that, and so, that assessments grant will cover. We're working on some other ideas for historic value, to see if we get more things done. But those things are important, obviously. We have been doing upgrades to the town hall for years, but we'd like to continue the front windows, and obviously, the ramp out front, if we can get the full grant monies for it, but this will give us a good opportunity to take a look at everything we need to do. So, the two bids that came in were from Lothrup, it's spelled Lothrup, I don't know why, but Lothrup Associate Architects for thirty-seven thousand, and for Russell and Dawson, Inc. for twenty-eight eight.
Both out of town?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Russell and Dawson, Inc. for twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, back onto item number eleven, which was added to the agenda to. Maybe a copy of that. Yep. Because I didn't know if it would be approved or not, that's why I didn't put it in. So, item number eleven, which was a reading of the authorization, authorizing resolution of the Plainfield Board of Selectmen, that talks about, like, be resolved, the Plainfield Board of Selectmen may enter into, with and deliver Tower Point any and all documents which deem to be necessary and appropriate, and be a further resolved, like Kevin Cunningham for Selectmen of town of Plainfield, is authorized and directed to execute, deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Plainfield Board of Selectmen, and to do and perform acts and things which deem necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. So, that's a way of saying, they're looking for someone to be point person. It's authorized.
Make a motion to move the resolution for Tower Point.
I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do have other, and I have a couple of things just to follow up with on some items. And it's, one of them's budget-related. We're trying our best to work with the Board of Finance Chair and the superintendent met with myself last week. We understand that a two-point-two mil, a two-point-two million dollars is not going to go forward, that would be one-point-five, oh five, one-point-oh-five million increase. It's something that we're trying to narrow down, bring it down, so it's, what they'd like to cut, but I can tell you that if approved by the Board of Education, we're probably looking at a much better number, probably than two-point-six, two-point-five million. There's still work to do, so I think we can still sit down at the table and come through with some numbers and help out. It's tough after a revaluation, everybody went through tough times, so we are working.
You take my data to the Board of Finance?
I've got, yeah, I've got them. Today, I've actually got two extra ones. You will notice one thing in the, in the proposal, that, I think you have the older one, I'm going to give you the newer soon, I have a copy of it, but, um, yeah, this was the twenty-fifth. We cut out as much as we can based on the other factors. I can tell you that you used to have in March twenty-first one, normally, we put three hundred thousand dollars in there for road repair. So, not initially. After speaking with Kelly on what we have available for road monies, and we just have the bid in from the state bid, we should still be able to do all the roads we anticipated, and there's a reason why. We do have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars when we did the project for water over in Hilldale, Office Cemetery Road, all those roads, they gave us a payment in Loo O, so that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. MRSA monies, we have a hundred and forty-four, eight oh three, town eight, maybe about a hundred and fifty. So, we have enough monies to be able to do those roads we were looking for. So, you combine those all together, and then, the bid that came in is underneath that. So, it's, again, it's something you do only if you're lucky enough to have the money, and in the meantime, you can not take as much out of the fund balance, because the fund balance is, is tight, it really is. I think we were at twenty before last auditor's report. I think when we get this auditor's report, we'll probably be down to like seventeen, between seventeen and eighteen, so it's got to be very careful how you execute and you use those monies. So, that's one of the things for update. One other one was, I think we spoke about, we had it added onto the agenda last time, we had an emergency issue with the roof, and we were lucky enough to have contact with the roofing store who came over, fixed up what we could, to tack it down for now, until they got the materials and the crane. So, they had estimated forty thousand dollars. Just so you know, we do have an account with the town clerk's office for what they call land protection. Comes out of the clerk's money, and then, you put certain monies into this account for the Selectmen. I would anticipate that, that right now, it's forty-one thousand, I wouldn't want to use it all, I would probably look to take maybe thirty from there, and then, maybe thirty from Tennessee, to be sure that we're, or twenty from Tennessee, to cover the fifth. Hopefully, it'll come underneath that, and we'll be much better off. But we are working on it, we have an idea where we're taking the money from, and we're just waiting for them to get access to a crane or a lift to bring materials up on top. So, really, the only other things would be, we would be looking to come up with some dates for modifications to the ordinances. I would look to also have that as a town meeting for the items on six, seven, and eight, if they're approved by the Board of Finance. Save a little bit, because you have all-in-one meeting. And it's tough right now, because you, you're going to have town meetings right now, because you're going to have the budget season coming up. May first will be a public hearing, May fifteenth is the actual first vote on the budget. If goes well, and we pass it, then we're fine for the remainder, but you've got to be very careful about how, if it fails, every two weeks after, you've got to look for the next one. So, that'll be like May twenty-ninth, June twelfth, things like that. So, I'm trying to plan the calendar accordingly, and see if we can make sure we can mark it on the calendar properly. So, our next meeting, we're talking about maybe voting on the ordinances, and at that time, if we pass through, the next step of the Board of Finance setting the dates for the town.
Think so, Board of Finance?
Yep. Right. So, their next, their meeting for April seventeenth, I think they can talk about all these other items we have. Okay, if you have anything else?
No. Make a motion to a journal, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Seven forty-four.